While you pledge allegiance solidified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, have a seat. Let's start with your call.
Anthony Lipsansky.
Physically present.
Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Alman.
Here.
Trevor Stone is absent. Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Alderman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Here.
Julia Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Anthony Pristash.
Present.
Moving on to approval of the minutes of the public workshop meeting held on July 6th, and the regular public meeting held on July 20th.
Let it be written.
Motion made by Mr. Lipsansky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next we move on to hearing of persons present, if you have anything to say, Steph Bowler. Our next is our president's report. We do have a report. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our code officers for an outstanding report for the month of July. You folks, it was in your packets. Our code department addressed many violations that were brought to their attention by the Borough Council and residents. Weed violations seemed to be the biggest complaint from council member and the residents. They processed fifty-one weed violations in the borough, with a total property maintenance violation of seventy-nine. This is just one month. In addition to the weed violations, other violations included vehicles that were stored illegally on private property and on the street illegally, mattresses in the street, debris on the front porches, hedges overgrown, and blocking streets and sidewalks. Now with all of that said, they enforced the rental ordinance, in case you're interested, that's rental ordinance number twelve oh seven. For twenty twenty-three registration renewal compliance, prior to June first was ninety-six percent. Now, after citations were issued, we're at ninety-nine percent with people registering their properties in the borough. Landlords had to be cited to get to that ninety-nine percent. So why did I do that? So in conclusion, our code officers were viciously attacked verbally from folks in the borough. Attacked verbally. Let me say this, all they want, and this council wants, is for our town to be clean. It seems that in the community, code like police are either your hero or you're fill in the blank. We are not a dump town by a river. We are Northampton and we are proud. We will work together as a team to keep our town clean and pristine. I want to thank the police department, our zoning, public works, and our office staff for being part of a team to make Northampton Borough a place where we can all be proud. Teamwork is everything. They were really attacked on social media, so I want to say that we have the best. This is a public report. It will tell you everything they did for the month of July and believe me, to be attacked like they were on social media is not acceptable. I thank you. End of my report. Moving on to the mayor's report.
Very, very well said, council.
Party.
Very well said, council president.
Thank you.
Very well said. After fifty-five weeks, tomorrow will be the last day to order banners for the banner project. I look forward to seeing a windfall of applications come in, as they've been coming in this week. We'll have a final number, and by Sunday night, this group, which is a six-wave of banners that we're doing, will be in production already, so unfortunately, anyone who comes in Monday, there'll be no last-minute reprieves, like I said, since we've had a very successful fifty-five-week run, and thanks to council for supporting that. This past Tuesday was pretty entertaining here in the Borough of Northampton, starting with Reverend Maraz's dedication of his monarch butterfly garden. He had two female monarch butterflies that did hatch a few days earlier, and as they opened up the netting, one flew off and headed south to its ancestral home, and the other actually landed on his arm, which was very poignant, since the reason of the monarch garden was to commemorate the passing of his wife and his beautiful granddaughter. So we were trying to decide, was that the granddaughter or was that the wife? And he can decide either, but it was a very blessed event, and here's a man who is going to smile for the remainder of his days, hopefully there are many of them, as he just celebrated his ninetieth birthday. We also had a very poignant celebration, the twentieth anniversary of Asante Resto Italiano, no, Asante Restorani Italiano, my apologies. Here's a family that came over from Italy, started in New York, and the daughter was on and the dad came to Northampton, saw the building, and said, this is where we're going to do our, build a home and build a family, build a business. Twenty years later, here we are with a fantastically attended outdoor party, humidity aside, it was very successful. All the legislative cognit genie were there with proclamations, as I did name it, Asante Restorani Italiano Day, to the surprise and joy of the family. In twenty years that I've been going there, I've never had bad service, anything but outstanding service, and the family really has made that business a Northampton landmark and continues to do so. So kudos to the Asante family and many, many more years of success, so good luck. And after being there, I just noticed something, that Northampton Borough is kind of the ice cream capital of the northwest Northampton County. We have Hillside, we have Rita's, we have Concrete Creamery, and Asante's for the full range, so if you're looking for some ice cream and even some miniature golf in between, Northampton's the place to go. So weather being what it was, I'm sure these businesses will be running until October of this year, November, we'll see. But anyway, that's my report, thank you, and again, council president, very well spoken about the weeds, yes, it's all about a beautiful Northampton, and we all have a social contract, and that contract is to take care of yourself and to take care of your neighbors too, so let's get those weeds taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
Our solicitor's report.
I have nothing to report unless anybody on council has any questions for me.
I guess we do have a question about the public works handbook, or the public handbook, is that going to be posted on our website, is that what you're saying, or it's not something you post?
The employee handbook, I believe, what you're talking about?
Yes.
That's, it's not currently, that's on our website, I think that'd be more of an administrative decision than anything else.
Okay, we'll discuss that then.
Yes.
I can get a copy of that, please.
Uh, then.
Leroy, I can get a copy of that?
Uh, the contract and the rules and regulations?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like a copy.
Then I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports from committees, we'll start with Mr. Hall, administration side.
Thank you. We are in receipt of the second quarter franchise from Service of Electric TV in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and forty-three cents. When the emergency doors on the south end of the Atlas Museum were replaced, it also removed the mural of the plant that was always viewed with, with interest. The new doors have a mural that shows the plant, plant number five, as it existed in nineteen sixty-five. A meeting was scheduled with candidate for junior council position. We met with Mr. Brokes and Brian Wes- Wellsco, excuse me, on Friday, August eleventh. A future meeting will be scheduled with Mayor Pristash, Councilwoman Alderman, and Councilman Lipsansky. End of report.
Thank you. Moving on to building land and recreation with Ms. Alderman.
Thank you. The last day of the twenty twenty-three pool season will be this Saturday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Final review has yet to be conducted, however, it would appear that it has been a successful season. We are having a problem with the digital sign at the recreation center, a replacement part was ordered, and a retrofit is scheduled. The netting that was ordered for the Canal Street Ball Field has arrived and was installed. The netting now extends fifteen feet above ground level. End of report.
Well, thank you. Code and police, Ms. Alderman.
Thank you. And close in your packet is the July code enforcement report. The committee is waiting on a report from the pension fund actuary in response to one of the requests of the police bargaining unit. One received, once received, another meeting will be scheduled. On Wednesday, August night, one of the police units was involved in an accident at Main Street and Lawback Avenue when the operator of the uncoming vehicle failed to stop for a red light. No injuries were reported. But if I could just elaborate on the police department report, they had seven hundred and fifty-three dispatches. There were three hundred and thirty-two incident reports filed, accidents investigations were six, and they were completed, parking tickets paid ninety-nine, with the total patrol officer and court hours being three thousand seven hundred seventy-four. End of report.
Thank you. Fire and health, Ms. Alderman.
Just as a reminder, there is no Board of Health meeting this month. The Northampton Fire Department asked me to let you know they will be attending the Lookout Fire Company of Penargel's annual Labor Day parade, parade, being held on September fourth, and adequate coverage will be provided to the Borough of Northampton while they are in that parade. End of report.
Thank you. Moving on to public works and sewer, Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. Public Works Supervisor Greg Maury, Mr. Wellsco, and Mr. Brokes met with the representative UGI in review of the repairs scheduled for East Tenth Street, Washington Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, Dewey Avenue, East Seventh Street, and pretty much the entire third ward. The majority of Washington Avenue will be overlaid, and the remaining restructured was in agreeable to the Borough representative. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Glassick.
We'll now move on to unfinished business. You have any unfinished business? Anything unfinished?
I wish I would have spoke about this prior. I've been receiving a couple calls or concerns about our live streaming, about the announcement that you can't hear it. I would ask that when we speak, because we did put this out there so that people that are homebound or that can't make a meeting, they can hear us. Again, I think the audio is working fine, according to our assistant borough manager, I just think that we need to have people speak into the mic and not turn their head and talk away from it, just so that people can hear what they're taking the time to listen, and I'll ask for a report when it's my time to see what was streaming.
In other words, use your outdoor voice.
There you go. Some of us have them.
I could turn around and still be loud.
I got that, Mr. Lipsansky. Under new business? And consider the request to conduct the Equinox Music and Arts Festival.
This request was originally on the July twentieth agenda. Action was tabled to afford the group making the request an opportunity to respond to council's concerns. Jordan Marsh appeared before council at the August third meeting and responded to council's questions. At this time, council is being asked to offer a decision on the use of the municipal park pavilion and permanent ban shell on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion, then we move forward. The gentleman who was here presented, they brought things to our attention, so I'm making the recommendation we move forward with this.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Glassick, second by Mr. Lipsansky, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought he had indicated, based on questions we had, that he was going to provide us with a list of the vendors, have we got that?
No, not yet. But when we notify him, I'm going to ask that he come here and meet with our staff to make sure he puts everything where he wants it and where we want it. I'm also going to ask that he provides a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured, and at that time, ask who his vendor, he may not know yet who his vendors are.
And where was he from?
Palmerton. Palmerton.
Palmerton?
And then the only other thing, Leroy, is that the food trucks are still listed to be by the generator, or the emergency pump station?
Pump station, no, we're not going to allow that.
I would hope not, because it's still on his report, and I asked him particularly about that.
No, that's why when we get him on site, we'll say, here's where you could go, here's where you could go, here's where you cannot go.
Okay, thank you.
Has anyone listened to the band's music? They're on Facebook.
The what?
The band's music on Facebook, they're on YouTube. Has anybody here listened to the band's music?
No.
Okay. It's interesting, you might want to take, take a listen before you make this decision and go from there.
I actually have another question that occurred to me now, so when you say someone will be on site, so will we have borough staff available, like there during the entire event, or they'll just be there at setup and, and kind of pick it up?
Just when they set up so that they go where we want them to go.
Does somebody kind of come and check out how they leave it when they're gone?
We can't do that until it's over.
But do you, do you put staff in pla, I guess my question is, do you put staff in place to do that routinely, or is that something that, no, they just kind of follow up on Monday when they?
Uh, we, we follow up usually on the next day.
On the next, next working, next working day, not, so if this is a Saturday, nobody would be kind of looking at the status of the parks until Monday?
And what are we doing for security concerns? Like I said, after listening to the music, I can see a different genre of people coming in this, that any event like this would need security, okay, especially a first-time event, we don't know who's coming, to what degree they're coming, what's going to be our, our contract socially and as a municipality for police and/or their own security to come in and make sure the crowds are managed?
Well, our police, if I may?
Oh, go ahead.
If I may, our police are across the street from the park. We've had other organizations rent that park for the entire day with music, and I don't think any of us went on their websites and listened to the music, I just don't want to open ourselves up for a liability, and now we're stereotyping and listening to types of music. If it's not my cup of tea, doesn't mean I.
I, I understand.
But we have other music groups over there that we haven't really went out and listened to their music prior to accepting their oppo- opportunity.
I understand, but I'm not denigrating the music at all, okay? It's a music festival, and we haven't had a festival that has been run without any background. We don't have any background on this group or anything, and my concern as head of the police department is how or what is our plan to monitor this? Now, all the events we have had do have a history, and if they are events of music, they've been smaller events in the pavilions where it hasn't been a quote "festival," okay? If they do the advertising on social media, you might see hundreds of people here, okay? That's my concern. I mean, there's a donut shop that opened up in Cherryville that did a phenomenal marketing job, social media-wise, the first day opened, the line went around the building, they sold out in two hours, okay? So social media has a huge impact on things like this, where this can draw people from all over, depending on the bands coming. I just want to make sure that our citizens are covered, that when this does happen, depending if there are twenty people or twenty thousand people show up, and that we have a plan.
That's really?
I, I agree with that statement. I, I, I absolutely agree with you also, Councilman Glassick, that I do not want to be in any way choosing someone and then not choosing someone based on their music, but when you talk about a festival, it does seem to be kind of a larger event and a first-time event, and bringing in vendors, bringing in food trucks, bringing in music, and I think that one part that he, I believe there are several bands, and so there's, he talked about setups and breakdowns in between, how long will this go on, how well will they clean up, again, as a first-time user? And I guess my question would be, Mr. Brokes, how many, how many music events do we have in the park typically per summer, fall season?
How many?
Yeah.
Community days. Community days, that's an event.
I, I'd say one or two that are specific that have music.
Okay.
And those one or two, how many times have they done this so far?
In the past, some, some are, are annual repeaters.
Repeater.
I'd like to see the people here so we can have these questions answered, like what is their anticipated goal? I, I'm surprised they're not here, because they seem very interested in having this done. Maybe there was a miscommunication or something, but I think this is really important to, to the town, that we do have their input into the council's questions.
Is there enough parking if there would be a, like a, kind of an explosion of?
You ever see Friday nights football games? They're all over. They park everywhere. My situation and question would be for the holders of this event to provide their own security of at least a half a dozen people that would be responsible for security that would report to the police department. I don't know at this time if, if the chief has thought about or taken into consideration having people available for that service. It's, it's, it's nothing more than a one-day community days, but it's a situation where you need to show the course is going to be calm and cool. And I think having them provide their own security, responsible to the police department, gives them an idea of what we're talking about. Now, whether they have five or five hundred, it doesn't matter, but they need to have onsite, visible security force. You can, you can go anywhere and get a shirt stencil that says "security," you know what I mean? You could put monit- monograms on it, flies, buffaloes, whatever, but something to indicate that if something were to go wrong, at least the people know who to go to, and then in turn, those people know how to contact the police department, and they can coordinate whatever the event requires, an ambulance or notification to come down, a person got sick, they fell down, they got hurt, we're going to try and get them on the ambulance if they need permission from them, or if they were just taken to the hospital, somebody to contact that person's relatives, let them know what's going on. And that would be done through their onsite security service, combining with the ability the police department has to identify who's what, where, and when. And then they can take care of that.
Let me be, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I, I don't think it would be a situation where they would have to expend dollars, they may get people to volunteer to do their security, but that should be known to them, they are responsible. Now, the exchange club, when they have their community days and that, they have certain members that are responsible for some type of security, and they go around and they communicate and they, they deal with the police department and, and work things out, and I think this would be the same thing here, because I would like to see more events in the park than what we have, because frankly, I believe we have a beautiful park there, the ban shell has a beautiful way that it projects.
Acoustics.
Musics, the, there you go, thank you, my brain was searching, but I didn't get to the cards. And I think, I think it's a, a tribute, not only to the town, but we need to beautify our parks. Now, the park across the street has had trees in it since nineteen hundred. Few of them are dead, a lot of them are gone. We need to replace them. We need to replace some trees in the park to make it look like a park and not just a, a meadow that has a tree. So these are some things that we could work on and think about, but I would suggest that it be told to them, Leroy, if you can, when they call, you call them, Nate, tell them that they need to provide a security service and someone who is going to be in touch with, that they can get back to us, that we can get back to them. We, that's the way we communicate.
Okay.
Let me be clear, just, it's not about the music to me, I mean, you check my Spotify playlist, it goes from America to Zizi Top and Beethoven in between, so I listen to all kinds of music. The word "festival" is what I'm focusing on.
Right.
I've been to festivals in my youth and everything, and, phew, they are, it could be a handful.
Bet you won't, it would stop.
No way.
Two comments, one, we have a festival for the Main Street, Street Fair. It's called the Main Street Festival, I believe.
And that's been going for thirty-three years, so there's plenty of the.
Okay, do we, do we increase the security for anybody there? And Paul Prince?
But we know what that is, Ron.
But I'm just asking, I think we don't even put it in our application that they need security. Now, we're all of a sudden, we're now, we're telling them that they need security, so I think the solicitor needs to say, is it something we could do, because they took an application, they filled it out, and now, now we're telling them, well, now you need your own security department, now you need this and things. I mean. That, that would be something that we can't mandate at this point.
I'm concerned about safety.
If we wanted to update the application and further review or anything, that's totally something that's within the realm of reason, but we can't, you know, we can't move the goalpost further back, so it's be, you know, we, we can say it'd be nice, but it's not anything that we can mandate at this point.
So again, my main concern is safety, that's my number one job here, and I just want to bring it out to council that it's in your hands now, but I know safety is a concern as Councilman Lipsansky spoke on, so that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, council president.
Any question, any more questions?
Yeah, I just missed, so I was not here the last meeting, so I didn't even hear that presentation, but have they ever had, is this the first time for them as well? Or they had one somewhere a year ago, and to give you some kind of numbers as to how that turned out, or is it just something new for them as well? We don't need to turn out, you don't need a Woodstock happening in our backyard.
No, there's no history.
That was the first time, too.
I don't believe they gave us a history or, or we asked for, so they.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all kinds of music, and that, that don't bother me at all, I'm just wondering if they've had a previous event somewhere that they can say, well, we had one up in Palmerton, and we had a thousand people, we had two thousand people, we had ten thousand people. Or is this just something, this is their first time, and like you say, social media can be your friend or your foe, and you could be, you know, so if they have any information, that would just be really helpful, that's all the question I really have.
Okay, well, thank you. So motion was made by Mr. Glassick, second by Lipsansky, we had a lot of debate here. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I'm opposed.
I'm abstaining.
Are you opposed?
I say no, yes.
I say no.
I'm going to abstain.
And then.
I wasn't here.
There's something that we had discussed briefly, i- in an abstention vote, if you wouldn't mind just providing the reason for the abstention vote.
Because I wasn't here to hear anything, this is the first time hearing anything of it.
And that's, that's totally.
That, that's, wait, I.
That's totally a, a, a normal reason, it's just, we, we should follow the Robert Woods. Thank you.
Okay, so the ayes have it.
I will make contact with these people and do the best I can to cover all the bases.
Next on the agenda is consider the request of the Northampton Exchange Club.
The Northampton Exchange Club is requesting permission to conduct the Jack Frost Parade on Thursday, October nineteenth, beginning at seven P M. It will follow the same route that has been used for the past several years. This, however, is a regularly scheduled council meeting night. Historically, council has rescheduled for the Wednesday before the parade date, in this case, that would be Wednesday, October eighteenth.
So what is the opinion of the council?
Motion to grant.
Motion made by Mr. Lipsansky, second.
Second.
Now, who had it?
Now, who had it, Donahue? Mr. Donahue? Question? Any question? No questions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next we would consider? Which one? Oh, I thought I'd missed something.
No, I was just looking at the back of the paper. I did it in a very dramatic fashion.
Oh, okay, thank you. I thought I finished and didn't know.
No, sorry.
Consider the resignation of Mr. Michael Adams.
Wastewater Treatment employee, Michael Adams, provided the office with a letter of resignation. He intends to pursue the life of a seminarian.
What is the, uh, opinion of council?
Rep, accept the resignation with regret.
Pardon?
Accept his resignation with regret.
Motion made by Ms. Haldeman? Second?
Second.
By Mr. Lipsansky? Question?
Wish him the best, no question. Just wish him the best from council, but no.
Wish it the best, okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. So with that in mind, making sure, reports from council members. I'm gonna start with Mr. Lipsansky.
Thank you, Madam President.
And I told him I was gonna do that.
Yeah.
She just wants me to take the time off. So I will hurry through my notes. I only, I only have a dozen. Uh, congratulations, Mayor, on your program. I think you've single-handedly piloted the situation for getting, explaining and showing the banners on Main Street. It really is looking good now that some of the other banners have been placed.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I, I again, am, am, am very, very pleased with the way town looks. I'm happy for the people. At least somebody can see, hey, we care for our veterans. We care for our people. Uh, also with, uh, the butterflies, with Reverend Merma- whoo, excuse me, I'll try it in English. Reverend Maraz has put a good program together. I know his background in this. I know he is totally committed to. And I, I, I like to see the, 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 the product of his wear. I told him the other day, when he spoke with me, about things that we need to do down there. Uh, I did have in the past butterflies visiting my pond and my flowers at my house. They're really nice. It's really, really a nice thing when you're sitting there and you just see a butterfly coming through. No noise, it's quiet, and it's beautiful. So I, I congratulate Reverend Maraz on his pursuits and I wish him the best for his program. Uh, with the weeds, again, people will get little, little tired of me going off on different roads with weeds and that. I would like to say, I have been very vocal for about the last twelve years about one oh seven, one oh nine Main Street. All right? I went by there on Friday and the property owner, I couldn't believe it. The, the taste almost fell out of my mouth. Was there cleaning up the weeds, picking up cans, putting them together. The property has made a drastic improvement from what it was. It now looks like a property that someone may consider or would consider either renting, purchasing, or buying. And that was done through a lot of work from code enforcement. Code enforcement and police work are parallels. The only thing you don't have to do in code enforcement is cuff and stuff. But other than that, they're the same. People need to understand rules were made to be followed. They're not like as Stalin says, said, a rule is like a pie crust, meant to be broken. So, you know, we do try and take our situations serious. And that may be the, the, the burn of some of the disapproval of some people that are upset with what's going on. They can't play with other people very well. And now they're just being instructed. And the teacher is the code enforcement, assisted by the police. If you wanna play, we're ready. Make sure your game is. Uh, the only other thing that I have that really depresses me is the pool is closing on Saturday. Now, I believe everybody knows that I hate summer. I can't stand it. But you look now from, what is it, the eighteenth or nineteenth that the pool closes? You still got a chunk of warm weather. Septembers have been very warm. It has been sometimes very warm in October. And this situation is preceded because lifeguards are going back to college. God bless them, I wish them the best of luck. It is nothing that they did that is wrong. But the other thing is that there are other people that may be qualified. And as we tried before last year, uh, to get some type of consortium with Copley, Whitehall, Catasqua, for all of their lifeguards, if we could form one pool and then, that group would then go to Pool A, Pool B the next day, Pool C the next day, Pool D the next day, and so on, and so on. At least I think we'd be able to extend the swimming for people in other communities, not only ours, but other communities. And I think, and people look at me like I have a leg in the middle of my forehead. It's something I believe people need to do. They enjoy that. It's just that they don't know how. I, I, I still think this horse is ridable. And all we have to do is get cooperation. And as I look, I yield back the ballots of my time to the chair.
Thank you.
It's only five minutes.
Thank you, Tony. I appreciate you. Mr. Glassik?
Mayor, uh, concur to the same feeling about these banners and how good they look in the town. Great job with them. You have been supportive of that for the last two years, if not more, to start that and push it through, but
Thank you.
Great follow-through. Do they come down at all this year?
No, three years.
They, they stay up for the full three years?
Yes, sir.
Through holidays and all?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And then the, uh, sponsors get them back.
Thank you. Comment on about the live streaming. I'm looking to create and use that to our fullest advantage. Not that we're gonna have allowed people to chime in and talk, but we should have allowed, and I'm looking at throwing this out as a discussion in an executive meeting or hopefully to the borough. Maybe they can put some suggestions in boxes. For them to be able to voice some concerns that they can't make it here, they could still be able to type it in. If it's just once a month, if it's once a quarter, that they could at least put some comments on. Does that mean we're gonna answer every comment? Probably not. Does it mean we're gonna probably have people that are gonna put things that are belligerent, um, and senseless? Probably, but that's just what we're in and we're just gonna try to move forward that people can make a comment if they're using the live streaming and things down the road. So I'm gonna ask that. That's something we're gonna look to do. Um, again, I think that we, just working on the sound can help people understand and hear better, better at home. Leroy, the sidewalk at five eighty-one East Ten Street, it's not mine. I know it's close to my address, but the sidewalk has been out now for a year and a half. Since Verizon destroyed that pole, our PPL destroyed the pole and put a new one in. They ripped the sidewalks up. It's still stone there, which now has been pretty much grass growing, probably better than sections of my yard. Um, but I think we need to have them finally do that sidewalk once and for all. It has been a year and a half. It doesn't take stone to settle for a year and a half. We can get streets macadamned in six months. They should be able to do a sidewalk. So that's the address. Um, just sick of looking at it, seeing people have to walk around it, kicking the stones all over. Um, again, thank you to the code enforcers, the public works, and even the police for the efforts that we are trying to make with these, weeds and trying to beautify our borough. Uh, I think the mayor pointed out, there is some good things on there on some of the social media websites that when somebody does go after us and talks about the weeds and it's his property, how other people do comment on it, so it's been out there. We do have more supporters than you might realize. It's not all negative. Other than that, my comment about this band is something I just don't wanna open ourselves up for liability. And it's, hopefully the police force can, you know, be in a presence and hopefully they have security and that we see more festivals do come to our town, cause that's part of the new newsletter that I think Mr. Wellesko wants to, uh, talk about and bring up to, uh, our next quarterly meeting. But one of the things I would like to ask him is, do we have a number of account of how many viewers and how many people viewed the, the accounts afterwards? Could you share that with us?
For what meeting?
Well, in general, for the last quarterly, the last three months, how many people viewed on, on average? Thank you. And how many people viewed, viewed it afterwards? Cause you can actually view the recording anytime.
About a hundred and fifty.
Per meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, just thinking, that's a hundred and fifty people that are not here, cause we have a very small group tonight, but people are still at home that can hear what's going on. And I think it's just important to show how we move forward to do that, so yes, was it costly? Was it painful for some, even more than others? Sorry if I turned that way. I, I had to.
I know your neck has-
I, I, I mean, I had to.
Yes, I know your-
But it, it is showing that we're moving forward when we have a hundred and fifty people view it on average and that we have the ability now to have them write some comments. Hopefully suggestions, not just armchair quarterbacks that always wanna throw their two cents out, but never help us solve the problem. So that's what we're trying to do moving forward. That is the end of my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
I have nothing this time around.
We'll make something up.
Hope somebody can-
The weather's nice, okay. Thank you, Jason. Ms. Alderman?
Thank you. I too, along with the mayor and other fellow council members here, wanna thank Reverend Maraz for the wonderful, um, butterfly sanctuary which he brought to our attention and made, um, happen down in our park. It helps to beautify and add color to our parks. And if you have any free time, he is actually looking for volunteers to help keep an eye on deadheading those plants that are in the waste stations and he would like, we would all like to keep them presentable. So if you have any free time and wanna make your way down there, just take a look and if you see any of those little dead buds on there, just pull them off. Um, along with the butterfly sanctuary down there is our community garden and up to date, they have harvested over one hundred pounds of produce that was donated to our food bank. So kudos to Kathy Novogratz who is keeping that garden going. Sometimes on her own and the volunteers that are down there, um, to help her out as well. And she is always willing to welcome any volunteers to the garden. And then lastly, I would like to congratulate the Asante family and their restaurant for their twenty year anniversary in our borough. Uh, I was at Tuesday's celebration. It was very well attended and it actually was sold out within a couple of days of the ticket announcement. So they had a really good turnout there. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. And thank you for remembering the community garden. We do need volunteers there. Did you sign up? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Alderman. Ms. Alderman?
Ms. Alderman? Thank you. Um, I, I, you know, ad nauseam here, but I, I, I'd like to, I was at the dedication of the, of the butterfly sanctuary also and, and I, I wanted to bring back that Reverend Maraz thanked all of council um, for the support that, that we gave him and, and all our stages of it, um, throughout this time. But certainly Leroy, you spearheaded this and made sure Public Works went down there, so thank you. Cause he, as, as Mayor, the mayor said, he, he had a, a great big smile on his face and it was nice to see.
Have you ever tried saying no to him?
No.
Neither have I.
And, and you know, I went over, I met his oldest daughter. I went over to say hello and I, you know, I, I, um, I congratulated her on, on her dad because, you know, we can all hope to be ninety years old, um, and have his spunk and his energy and his tenacity, um, and his class in doing it. And he's gracious and kind and, and he, uh, this means the world to him, so thank you Leroy for getting that done. I know that there were some uphill battles and, uh, but it got done and it, it did make him very happy. And I, I know the mayor played a large role in it too, cause he had his fancy butterfly T-shirt on that. I don't know why I didn't get one, but you know. It's, it's okay. I, I can, I, I'll forgive that. Um, very quickly, I, thank you to code too. I, 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 obviously I, I think there were a tremendous amount of notifications as, as needed at this time, but hopefully they do work hard. They, they take a lot of grief. Um, I, I just wanted to comment, I'm sure Leroy will again be bringing it up in, um, maybe the month to come, but Twenty-Sixth Street Playground, Public Works has been up there doing some really nice work repaving, resurfacing the basketball court.
Repave the basketball court.
And it, and it looks sharp, so, um, I, I did wanna ask about if we are proceeding at all with the, the second pi- pickleball court, court that we talked about, down with the Alliance or maybe next year?
We were not anticipating doing the basketball court at Twenty-Sixth Street, so that got put on hold.
Okay, but, but, but it's, we haven't lost sight of it. It's probably gonna happen at some point.
Probably next year.
Right. Um, and then I lastly wanted to comment on whoever read that we actually, um, that the group of us, Mr. Lipsansky, um, Tony and myself did meet with, um, a young man for, uh, the position for junior councilman. He is sitting right over there tonight with his mom and dad and I would encourage, um, all you uh, fellow council members to go over and introduce yourselves to Mason and his mom and his dad. Um, I believe we'll be talking about this, and again, I'm not stealing Leroy's thunder, cause he likes this stuff. And we'll be talking about it more in September. I was, I was schooled in how this process works. So, uh, but you'll have an opportunity to say hi tonight to a very nice young man. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman, and moving on to Mr. Hall.
Thank you. I have a question for Leroy and if not, he can contact them? Uh, streetlight, the twenty-first domain was taken out, seems like a year ago. Uh, is that getting replaced? Is it eighty-six?
I lost my contact with PPL. She was moved to another department and she was supposed to send me a new contact person.
Cause it's, it's a tripping, where they have a cone over and there's a wire, I guess, on there or whatever, and either take it out? I mean, it is lit up, but it's not lit up, but the streetlight was there for a reason. Uh, but it's been quite some time and I know others that have got knocked down. It takes a while to replace, but it's been a long time.
I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Um, meeting on September eighth. We'll have to move it along, cause we'll have to get out of here quicker, because the football game is normally Friday, the September eighth is going to be Thursday, September seventh. So, football traffic and whatever, just to get ourselves out of here, football traffic, we didn't wanna speed the meeting along, so we'll have a football game. That's usually not a clock or so, so we should be out of there by then, but Tony gets on a speaking, but the football game is on, we'll get, is on a Thursday night, it's a rarity, but there's a Thursday night football game instead of Friday. It's actually one of the first game, the first or second game. And as we're talking about and we're holding everybody else accountable, I brought this up months ago. Uh, when they replaced telephone poles and they put the new one aside of it and they leave the old one out. And I know it was hard enough to get that one moved that was in the middle of an intersection, but we should really, we're pulling weeds, we're pulling whatever, you got these two poles sitting side by side, they gotta get taken out. It's a responsibility of the last person who takes the wires off that pole. Or and or who owns the pole to get the poles out and replace the concrete, which is what Mr. Glassik has been saying. You know, uh, we're worrying about weeds or whatever, but you go around and you don't really notice it. But if you go around and look and you look how many, there's one at twenty-first, uh, twenty-first and LaBuck. There's one at twenty-first in Washington. They're all over the place. Where you're gonna have a stump of a telephone pole sitting inside of another pole that came out. When the emergency workers come out and do their thing, they put the new poles in, each- When the emergency workers come out and do their thing, they put the new poles in, each contractor comes over and they move their pole, but they leave the old pole still sitting, it looks like, pardon my French, looks like hell. No different than weeds.
Twenty-first and Center Street too.
Yeah, they're, they're over, I mean, if you just look, and you go for walks, you go into your areas, you know, take a look, they're all over. Not in the upper areas possibly, like, but wherever they replace poles, and there's accidents, the poles get taken out. So, I think that should be something that should be addressed as well.
Okay.
And a report.
Got it. Hey, we got it.
We got it.
Moving on to announcements, Mr. Ropst.
I would like to turn this portion over to Brian and he can tell you about his newsletter.
Talk loud.
Come up there. Come to the center, please? Oh yeah, get the camera on there.
Can you get back there and help? Yeah, scary.
Talk right in the mic.
Yeah, get close.
Use your outdoor voice.
Hello. Um, no, so, we're bringing back the newsletter. From the past, what's up?
Where do you live?
Uh, twenty-one sixty North Hampton Avenue. Uh, no, yeah, so we're bringing the newsletter back. Uh, it's gonna go out the first of the month in which a season changes, so September first and then the next one would be December first. Um, so yeah, it's, it's pretty long, the first one's gonna be longer than the other ones, I imagine, because I wanna give as much information as possible. So that way, it's kinda like a one-stop shop for people for when they go on. Rather than have to peruse the various sections of the website, they now can literally go click on one thing. It'll have a table of contents, so they can just find where it is and go from there.
Thank you for reaching out. That list is gonna be very long, cuz I think I sent them twenty things already. So, the more we can have, the more council people that can take the time to put some suggestions there, that's what it's about. I know you reached out to the food, food bank, the police department, the fire department, EMS. All these things in our town are gonna be at the people's fingertips in a newsletter, which we haven't had for a while. So we'll actually give Mason a job right off the bat, you know, as soon as we talk to him. Um, but thank you for stepping up and doing that.
Absolutely, and, uh, like I said in the email that I sent you, I think the twenty-fifth, cuz that'll give me a week to add anything that you put in. I know most of you have sent something, but if there's anything else that you come up with, twenty-fifth. Which, what is today, seventeenth? Eight days.
Seventeenth.
Eight days, next Friday then. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
That's it?
That's it.
Can you make up something else? Just talk.
Everyone's doing great. Especially you, Leroy.
That's gonna cost you. I'd like just to thank the mayor also for the work he's done with these banners. If he wouldn't have done it, I probably would've had to give it to Brian to do. Uh, but he handled it admirably and.
Thank you.
I just, I, every once in a while, I go stand in a parking lot, I look at my face and I say, who is that kid? I don't even remember him. Hats off to Pastor Maraz, did a, did a great job organizing, promoting, and encouraging uh, for us to get, get that project underway and get it completed. And, uh, I, I'm glad that we could. Uh, there were times that he said, oh, I, I hope I get to see it, I hope I get to see it, well, he did. Um, other than that, um, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, I'll be flying down to Florida. The granddaughter, not the one that was here at the meeting a couple we- uh, weeks ago, but her younger sister is getting married on the third of September. And she asked me to come down and sing at her wedding, so I can't very well turn her down. I'm looking forward to it. I should be back by the day after Labor Day, so I should be here for the seventh of September's meeting to, uh, get clogged up in the football traffic. Other than that, that's, uh, thanks everybody for coming.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah.
Mr. Mrs. President?
Yes.
Would we be able to pay the bills that are outstanding, that have been cleared and ready to be made whole?
Motion made to pay the bills by Mr. Lapsansky, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall, question?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Glassick.
Leroy, bearing and drive for the pump houses, uh, is this all gonna be, it was eighteen thousand dollars for the sludge pump? Was there a part that was broke again?
This was, uh, at the main plant. Yeah, it, the sludge pump needed, needed repairs. That's, that was probably an original part that was replaced. It's been in place there since nineteen, phew, nineteen eighty-nine.
Um, Norfolk Southern Corporation, which is a railroad, I understand.
Yep.
Where do we lease land from them?
We lease, uh, land at different places. One of the, the largest is the Siegfried Station up at twenty-first and Canal, where the historical society is in.
And they don't give that back to the borough, the money, that we have to send them money for a lease?
Oh yeah, we have to.
We can't request that we can get?
It used to be a whole lot cheaper than that. Uh, we also, they also lease land down along Railroad Street in Newport, along the railroad tracks. That allows people who live there on Railroad Street a place to park.
I take the RS flooring bill for four thousand eight hundred dollars was for the community center?
Nope, that was for the floor and the rec center.
Rec center?
Yeah, we do that floor every year. The gym floor.
Okay. I see the sludge came down, I guess because of the lack of water or rain, but we had a fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollar bill for sludge this month, unless it wasn't enough days that we didn't have. And that's the end of my questions, unless there's anybody else that has any.
Anybody else have questions?
He covered mine, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Maybe a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Hall, second. On the Solomon, question? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Have a great weekend, everyone.